Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Independence City Council meeting. This is our special meeting. Let the record show that everybody's here and Kathy's here on the phone. It's nice to see everybody. Thank you for being here. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to select a council member for the vacant position that we have. Council position, just to make sure everybody knows, is like about 24 regular meetings a year, plus about four or five additional meetings, plus about three or four budget committee meetings, plus liaison committee meetings, and other activities as designated. We're going to interview two folks tonight, Gary Van Horn and Odi Campos. The format for today is, as was published, we'll give each candidate a couple of minutes to kind of introduce themselves, to kind of make an opening statement, and about 15 or 20 minutes-ish of questions, and then we'll let everybody have a couple of minutes to kind of wrap up, make a closing statement. And then we'll have the other person, and after that, then we'll make a decision. Sound okay with everybody? Okay. Kathy, you good?
I'm good.
Mr. Van Horn, would you like to be next up? Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to council tonight.
Good evening.
Thank you. So Karen's handing out some of the additional information that you provided.
It's just a little more detailed information of civic involvement, professional employment, and other activities for supplements, instead of me talking through it.
Great. So why don't you take two or three minutes, and whatever you'd like to do is kind of an opening, introduction, opening statement, however you'd like to play that. To you.
I think I'll make an opening statement, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Thank you, and for the record, I'm Gary Van Horn. I live at 833 Cessna, and I've lived there since August of 1976, 42 years. And during that time, I've been regularly involved with long-term in both the city and county level during the entire time. Please understand that I haven't had a job interview for a number of years. I think '89 was the last time, so please bear with me. I'm not used to doing this anymore. I'm applying for the vacant council, excuse me, vacant council position for three reasons. Primarily to maintain the geographic balance existing on the council prior to Mr. Day's departure, or since Mr. Day's departure, I should say. My personal interest for community involvement has been ongoing, reflection of my living in this community. And finally, professional and volunteer experience has been directly related to this opportunity, which would hopefully be of value to the rest of the council membership. Our vision for independence is concerned, a worthwhile goal for our city, is assuring that we live where our city provides exemplary services for residents and provides those services transparently and economically within available revenues. Please know that the recent and ongoing efforts to improve transparency are recognized and sincerely appreciated. A handout has been provided with detail of volunteer and professional experience, professional experience at the staff, management, and executive level for federal, state, and local government levels, has been shared with our community as a volunteer, and it would be an honor to continue that approach. That's all I have.
Okay. Now, questions for council? Who wants to start? Michael, did you want to? I'm trying to jump in.
I do have one question. You seem to be a little bit of a discrepancy on your city council membership in your thing. You said you've served for three years.
Yeah, that is a draft of the application that I sent. The table that you have in front, I can't get my old resume out of my old computer. And so I was doing this all from memory, and I was going to say that the membership, early membership on the planning commission is not on that either.
Okay.
Would you have typed down this a little bit better?
So you remember the full term?
Thank you.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. First of all, I just want to say, I'm so glad we have some great candidates, and not just the two that we selected, but even some of the other ones. I was very pleased to see we had some very qualified people. So you were on the city council '79 to '82. Do you recall, were there any master planning being done at that time?
Significantly. We were one of the first cities to get our transparency plan submitted.
Very good. And the other question I had was, you mentioned in your application, and also you mentioned in your opening statement, transparency. What would you like to see done towards transparency? What would you like, what new type of transparency would you like to see?
I think that we need to continue that a little bit more, and I think that we need more community involvement.
So like more?
The city of Salem, for example, has a series of neighborhood organizations, and those folks report through the leaders from the organizations to the city council through the staff and at the meetings. And I think that might be a real good thing for independence to consider.
Are you comfortable with 24 meetings a year, a half a dozen additional, a half a dozen special, and other things as assigned as they come along?
Yes, I would be. I'm retired, I don't have anything better to do.
Maybe highest and best use of my time would be.
Well, I'm working on a few car projects and boat projects at that.
Diana?
Can I do it in Spanish? You know, I'm really glad that, you know, they're willing to apply again, and what's your feeling about, would you be willing to kind of reach out and kind of start including the Hispanic community as a whole town?
Well, I think we need to include everybody that is certainly.
Because it seems like, they need to know what's going on.
Oh, yeah, and that's one of the reasons I was suggesting the organizations for the local community level, the neighborhood organizations. I worked for the city of Salem planning department for about two and a half years, I think it was, and that's how I learned about this. And they were very helpful in a number of projects that we were doing over there then.
Kathy, you have a question you'd like to ask?
Yeah, actually, I do. After kind of reviewing applications, and I know that as we began to address the number four, and there's been a little conversation this evening, so I think question number four kind of addressed broad vision for independence, and Mr. Van Horn, you give address neighborhood association. What other project specifically would you like to be undertaken by the city council for the benefit of independence?
Well, at this moment, I haven't thought about anything, because I haven't had enough time to spend actually working with the council to know for sure what I would like to take a look at. I'd like to be able to make suggestions after I learn something.
Fair enough. So as a resident of the city, none of those will nine things in the back of your mind saying, "Why doesn't the council do this?"
At coffee in the mornings during the week, there's a bunch of folks get together at the Experimial Aircraft Association hangar, and there's always a question of the day about, "Why haven't they done this?", or "Why the hell did they do that?". But I don't have anything near that's, Kathy, that's a big issue right now that I would think needs to be considered or discussed at this point. You know, I'd just like to get a better feel for what's going on in detail before I start asking questions, because there might be answers that are available that I don't know about.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a, I wrote a bunch of questions down. Excuse me if I read them, because.
That's okay. I had to read what I thought.
There you go. The Independence, the city of Independence has a longstanding vision for the revitalization of our downtown and the waterfront, and the Independence Landing Project is part of that dream. Do you support this effort? Can you speak to the perceived benefits and detriments of that project?
I'm not sure what the detriments or the benefits would be. The other thing is going to provide a hotel for areas that we don't have, or for tourists that we don't have accommodations for now. And I also think the apartments along the river are going to be a very positive situation. I'm not sure what's being planned for the parking lot on the east side of the existing amphitheater down there, but I know that some folks have been concerned that that might be eliminated for some reason, and they don't think that's a very good idea. And I think parking is an issue downtown, whether it's revitalized or not. Again, I don't know any of the details of what might be done or what might not be done, so, you know, all I can do is share that that's kind of the feelings I have about it.
So you think it's a good, so you like what the council and the city have been doing on that? You feel good about that? You don't, I mean, I'm?
Oh, well, I don't know enough about it to say a whole lot of it, and I think it's a good direction. I think things started out years ago with the, you know, the future visions study and interviews plan that was put together, but I haven't paid a lot of attention to it. The one question I have is, why the heck do you have a traffic circle down there? You know, but that's one of those kind of questions that comes up at the coffee in the morning, so. I don't, I'm not trying to avoid.
No, no, and the reason I'm writing down your stuff, so that, the reason I'm not making eye contact is I'm writing down, because I didn't want you to think it. Other questions? Michael, do you have others?
I did have another question. I was wondering, so in your vision for the future of independence, we kind of touched on the transparency aspect, but you said you want a city that could provide these services and economically within available revenues. Could you maybe unpack that a little bit? Is this just?
Well, right now, we've got $40 million of debt, and I don't know if that's the right amount of debt, or too much, or too little, but I would like to find out more about that. But again, that's one of those, you know, questions that until you sit around and you learn what's going on, it may or may not be. But I know, as an individual, if I go out to buy a house, they're going to look at my debt-to-income ratio. And I don't know what is a good rule of thumb for a city or any independent taxing district. I don't know how that all works. And I, again, I think I need to learn a lot before I start asking questions.
Okay. So, just, so I'm not sure. So you're not just only supporting projects as long as there's cash on hand as a?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Or, you know, again, they have to pencil out, right? Spend a lot of time figuring those things out over the years, especially as a budget analyst for the executive department.
Okay. Other questions? Tom?
One of the things that comes up often before council is, why is the city's water bill so high? How would you go about suggesting to someone that they find out the details on that?
Well, I think one of the suggestions that the city has complied with, as far as I know, one of our residents out there was concerned about the breakdown of the bill, and you guys put some of that together. The other side of that equation would be what I would do as a budget analyst, and that is take a look at what the actual cost of running the system is, and whether or not we're covering that, and including the set of sides over time for future needs, or unmet needs, or unexpected needs. But again, that's something that I don't know about, and I'm sorry, I just haven't been involved daily.
Diana?
Tom?
Tom, my other questions have been answered, so. Diana, do you have other questions? Kathy, you have a question?
I think I'm, I think I'm good.
Okay. What do you think are the greatest opportunities and the challenges of, what do you see as the greatest opportunities and challenges in the coming three years for the city of Independence?
Wow. That's a question you'd have to know a lot more about what's going on, and I think I know right now, John, but I think one of the biggest challenges is, is going to be solving the parking situation downtown, especially when the hotel gets built. I think the long-run goal is making sure that the other city services, you know, water, sewer, roads, that sort of thing, are well-covered and well-executed. And I think, in large part, they are. In some areas, there's some work that I think needs to be done, but that's just what I think, and I'm not sure what everybody else on the council would think about it.
This is your opportunity to share if you'd like to, if there's anything further you'd like to go on to that one.
Not at all. One of the things I have done is I've asked the, on occasion, folks in the airpark through the Law Carroll network to provide feedback, and I think that that is an asset which I could bring here, you know, in terms of local feedback, that would serve as an example for how other parts of the community might want to work that way with helping the council out. And it's a good way to get information out, too. It's kind of a closed loop, though, because it's only for residents.
Do you have other connections? Because you've mentioned a couple of times, you know, relationships out at the airpark, and, you know, and you're working with the EA and other places. Are you connected anywhere else? Are you involved with other activities in our community?
Not in this community, no.
Are there other questions for folks? Please, go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, can I jump in?
Please do.
One sec, please. I don't have the benefit of the revised type application. I see city budget committees six years. Are you currently serving on the budget committee, or is that prior experience?
I'm up for renewal, and that's how I found out that there was an application process for this position. I sent in the response to Karen that I would like to get a new appointment for the next term, and I also, under other, indicated city council position that was open. And then she sent me the application, and I filled it out, and then she was kind enough to call me and let me know I had to have it in by noon. And I was up at my brother's, I was up at my brother's in Woodland helping him out. And so that's why you got the draft, original application in sloppy handwriting.
Well, it's still better than my.
Yeah, it's pretty got better stuff. Thank you, Gary.
Still better than my handwriting. Only my mother was able to read it. Additional questions from folks at this point? Other questions? I guess you get to make closing statements. You have two or three minutes to put a bow on this.
The only thing I think I would like to say at this time, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is that I would, as I said, appreciate being able to continue being a resource to the community.
Okay. All righty. Thank you for taking the time. Appreciate it.
Do I stick around, or do I leave?
No. This is open to the world.
Okay. Thanks, Kathy.
All right, finishing my note to myself. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to city council.
Thank you very much. Honored to be here.
Thank you. We'll do the same thing that you just saw with Mr. Van Horn. Give you two or three minutes at the beginning to make an opening statement, any comments, introduce yourself, however you'd like to use that time, and then we'll have up to 15, 20 minutes worth of questions and/or conversations, and then two or three minutes worth of closing statements, and, sounds good?
Perfect.
Okay. Welcome, and we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. My name's Odi Campos, for the record, and I've been in our community for 16 years. I shared a little bit about my story, I think, in one of the city council meetings previously, but my family immigrated here from Mexico when I was a young child. We immigrated here to Oregon right after I graduated high school, so my story is very similar to a lot of our community here, a lot of the families here in the community. You know, we work hard and strive for a better life for our families and for our children, which is why we're here. So, you know, it's always been a dream of mine to be a public servant. I have always been a servant leader, meaning I have always been one of those to assist others. You know, that is kind of something that I was raised, from my parents, to assist, to help, to provide, not just, you know, to provide opportunities. And it's something that I hold dear to my heart, and I'm passionate about. That can be seen from the resume that I shared, is every activity that I, every job, actually except for Chur Brothers, but every job that I've had has been, you know, with social work, working with families, working with Latino families specifically, in my work with the Oregon Child Development Coalition. That's what I currently do as program director for our migrant seasonal Head Start program here in Independence, and then one over in Salem that we have, too. So I've worked with our community for 15-plus years now, low-income families. We also serve non-migrant families, non-agricultural families with our preschool promise program. So, you know, I do understand a lot of the challenges that our families face, a lot of the challenges that our families in poverty face, not just because my family went through that growing up, but also because of the families and the connections that we have here in the community. I've been involved in my church and the parish council. I've also been involved in the local YMCA as a board member, so, you know, I really tried to be a servant here of our community, and not just one specific group, but all groups, because we do have a lot of underserved, underrepresented families here in our community, too. So what my dream, what my hope is to be here and to serve them, and then be a voice for them as well.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Who'd like to ask the first question?
I'd like to do that. What is your assessment of how we as a council and city government serve the Hispanic community at this time?
You know, I think, I think in general, we could all do better. And it's not just this council, and it's not that, you know, we don't reach out and try to get the community members involved. We know this is not just a problem here in Independence, but it is, you know, throughout the state, throughout the nation, is civic engagement. You know, we want to engage our community members, not just the Hispanic or Latino families, but families in general in poverty. The way that I think of it is, families in poverty have a lot of challenges, a lot of barriers. You know, a lot of our families have children, you know, they come home from work, they're tired, you know, it's really difficult to come home from working labor jobs and attend a meeting, you know. As passionate as you are about it, as much as you want to be there, it's really difficult, especially if you have to cook dinner, if you have to make sure you get babysitters for your kids, and, you know, there's a lot of challenges and a lot of barriers here in our community that really prevent our families from being here, because there's a lot of them that want to, and it's not just low-income families, it's families in general that want to participate. So, you know, for me, you know, coming here, I do know some of those challenges, and I think what I want to do, and what I commit to doing, is working with the city council to make sure that we remove some of those barriers, because I think that's the only way that we can really actually include, and it's doing something different. You know, and I think the city of Independence is okay with doing something different in order to engage our community and engage all of our residents here.
Is there, is there, trying to get specific, but is there maybe kind of a blind spot that the council has to some of the economically disadvantaged?
Babysitters. Child care is one of the big things, you know, especially, and I know that because of the families that we work with, we have parent meetings at night, so we try to engage our parents. And we're pretty successful in engaging our parents, if you compare our meetings to the school districts' meetings. And that's because Head Start really focuses on removing some of those barriers for our community, and we purposefully allocate money towards parent engagement and parent funds. So we provide childcare for the families, we also provide dinner for the families, because that's one of the major barriers that we've seen. When we ask the parents, you know, "Hey, what's the barrier?", they say, "Well, you know, I have to go to a meeting, and then when I come home, I still have to cook dinner", and so that's, that's just one of the things that we want to remove in order for them, because if we provide the care and the food for you, then you can really focus on the meeting, and not have to worry about your kids running around here back and forth, trying to pay attention, try to provide feedback at one of the meetings.
Yeah, is there any other ideas you have for increasing civic engagement? Specifically, that's probably.
You know, I think, just recently, and I think we're moving in that direction, I think the city council, or the city of Independence, went to St. Patrick's Church and requested some feedback from our parishioners. I think that's exactly one of the ways that we want to make sure that we provide, get feedback from our community, because a lot of times, it's difficult for them to come to us, we need to make sure that we go to them. So hitting those spots where we know that our families are going to come to we, and that they're going to be at, I think that's one of the, I think that's one of the key things that we can do in order to really engage our community, because we've got to go to them, we've got to reach out, and then I think little by little, as we remove barriers, they're going to be coming in, be more engaged.
And you're currently on the planning commission, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
How's that going for you?
I enjoy it. I do, I really do. And I'm excited about all the different projects that we have going on here in the city of Independence. I'm really excited to have that going, and what I'm worried about is, we're going to run out of things to do, so we're going to have to come up with some more stuff to work on.
Okay, since you said that, do you have any thoughts about that? You think, projects, I guess, city projects that you might be interested?
You know, I'm interested in the brewery that we're talking about, I'm interested in getting the ice sword, right? I'm going for that. You know, the hotel that's being built, because I know that's one of the things that we want to increase is tourism here in our community. Independence is a gorgeous town. I have friends from California that want to come over and stay, and my house isn't big enough to house everybody, so, you know, we're constantly having to look for different locations. We use Mamir sometimes, but, you know, everything around here is either Dallas, we have a Comfort Inn in Monmouth, but that's not going to be exactly the same as our hotel here in Independence. Also with my work, we have program director meetings throughout the state, and a lot of times when we try to have them here in Independence, we have to house them over in Dallas or one of those hotels in order for them to be comfortable. So I'm excited for them to actually stay here in town, and then when we have our meetings in the summertime, they can enjoy some music in the park, enjoy some of the delicious Mexican food from the parks that we have going on there, and so I am excited for the future, and I am really excited about what we have going on here in town.
Diana, you?
You're going to be working with different kinds of personalities. Are you willing to be a team player?
Absolutely. I'm, right now, where I'm working at, I supervise 140 staff members, and so, you know, we come, different people, different personalities, and that's okay. You know, we want to make sure that, you know, we have a diverse population, community, staff members, because everybody has different ideas. I think one of the ways that, you know, we need to, it's in this part of engagement, you know, we want their different ideas. If they disagree, that's great. You know, that's how we get different ideas, and that's how we challenge each other, and that's how we grow. I think it's important as one of the leaders here, though, to make sure that we are always calm and collected, and make sure we know how to navigate sometimes difficult situations, difficult conversations, which is expected. You know, we can't please everybody, so, you know, when they come and, you know, for grocery shopping, and they get in our faces, then, you know, we need to know how to de-escalate situations, too. So, and I'm perfectly comfortable with that, I've done that before, so, I enjoy the challenge.
We've had a community engagement officer here, and that position is in transition right now. How effective, first of all, were you aware of the position, and how effective do you believe it has been?
Yes, actually, he actually reached out to each and every single one of our partner agencies. He did a great job connecting with the school district, connected with OCDC, he connected with service integration. There are various organizations, nonprofit and business organizations, that would come here and attend some of the meetings he would hold. And we, you know, access meetings is what he called them, and we brainstormed, we talked about some of the challenges we faced. we, we talked about some of the challenges we faced. Actually, some of the ideas that came out of that meeting were to go to the community to get feedback from the families. One of the things that came up from that meeting was that in the summertime, it'd be a great idea if we hosted some barbecues at the local apartments, the local neighborhoods, you know, engage the children. And, you know, we committed as one of the partners too, to provide some activities for the children. So we'd have water tables and do, you know, similar to what we do with Western Days, you know, provide activities for the children in the apartment building. So they can come out and enjoy some, some good time while their parents are discussing, you know, the future of Independence with some of the city council members or staff from the city. So, yeah, it was very, very beneficial for us and very effective. And he had a really great relationship with a lot of our parents in the larger community.
Kathy, do you have questions?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to move back just a little bit, because first of all, Odi, I, I really appreciate your passion, the fact that all the voices in our community need to be heard. And, and we've talked about some specifics. So I'm going to take a step altitude a little bit. We're, we're reaching a point where we're kind of coming to the fulfillment of some long-term visions with Down By The, Down By The River and such. Where, I'm just, where do you see Independence going from there? So, and I know this is a really big question. But, you know, okay, you've got a hotel going in, apartments down by the river, expanding the park down there. Where do you see us going from there?
Alright, so-
And where do you see us becoming?
So one of the, you know, this, this thought came to me after watching that video that the city of Independence created. And, you know, a lot of what I saw on there was diversity. And that made me very proud to be part of our city here. You know, I saw the, the stripes, you know, the red, white and blue and, or stars and stripes in that video. But I also saw some of the Latino background and the heritage that the city of Independence has. I think for the future of Independence would be to embrace that. And, and we've taken the step already in being an inclusive city here, but really truly embrace our entire community. I think, you know, when we hold our Fiesta in August, you know, if you look around, it's not as diverse as, as I'd like for it to be. You know, I would really like to see a larger mix in that community, because it is something beautiful. You know, both cultures are very beautiful. And I think being able to welcome everybody and have them be a part of that is one of the huge things, I think. You know, we already have the, the structures, the foundation, everything set. And I think, you know, one of the focuses could be on the people. Just bringing everybody together.
Another one, Kathy, do you have one to follow?
Thank you.
No? Okay. I'll jump in with one.
Sure.
It's a, it's a little bit different subject. Again, I'm reading. You know, Independence, we've worked hard to, to work with the school district and have a physical presence in the schools through the school resource, resource officer program. And we've also done things with skill building and some of the maker space kinds of things, kind of building on the CTE programs. Talk about the relative priority you believe we should give to efforts like this in, for our city.
I think it's crucial. I think one of the things, if we, if we saw the ratings that just came out in the state of Oregon, I think the central school district does need a little bit of support and a little bit of help too. I think overall, compared with the state, we're doing relatively well, but there's always room for improvement. I think we just attended, and actually we just held a forum for the youth, not too long ago, it was about a month ago, where we had community members come and speak and say, you know, what's going on here in our community? What do our students need? I think one of the big benefits was, that actually, one of the things that came out in previous meetings was, you know, absenteeism. You know, a lot of students weren't going to school because they have medical appointments, they had to see mental health appointments, you know, dentists, you know, whatever it may be. And the solution that came out of that was the Health and Wellness Center. You know, so I, I think, you know, there are a lot of barriers there. And when we hear and when we listen, we turn it into action. And I know the city of Independence had a part in that too as well, Polk County. Out of this one though specifically, they did talk about some of the challenges that our current students face with, with, I guess, the, the pressure of going to college, because college isn't exactly for everybody. You know, we want to make sure that our, our students graduate from high school, that they're knowledgeable, and that they're ready to be engaged, not just as a citizen here, but also as, you know, a force, you know, to have a job, to work, and make sure they're productive citizens. But one of the things that we did realize was that we needed a little bit more trades, a little bit more, you know, helping some of our students and bring back some of those welding classes, some of the woodworking classes, you know, some of the auto mechanic classes. Because that, that's all evolving. We want to make sure that, you know, Central High School and all of our students also play a part in providing some of those workers, those skilled workers into our community as well.
Other people having questions? Will you, will you can ask some of your questions or?
Well, I, I don't want to, you know, and some, some of them already-
Go ahead and ask a question. So in your, your daytime job and through some of your commissions, you're involved with the city of Monmouth quite a bit. How do you see them in contrast with the Independence and how well do you work with them and how well can we work together?
So I think when we talk about Monmouth and Independence, it's, it's like a brother and sister, you know? We, we like each other, we love each other, we have to play well. And, and I think we, we do. I think we do do a very good job in working with the city of, of Monmouth. I do know a lot of the, the members, the city council members over there. I've worked with Darian and some of the people that are Parks and Recs. So I do know a lot of those people. And they have similar goals to us. They, they don't get there quite as fast as we do, but they do have similar goals. But I think, you know, working with them is, it's just normal. It's just natural. I think, especially when you look at our youth and our children, you know, they, they need lots more activities. They need lots more gym space. They need lots more parks and things to do here in the community. And Monmouth would be an obvious partner for us to do something. Maybe make use of the S-curves over there. We kind of share that, you know, it's kind of in the middle, you know, something that we could do with them, the skate park too, you know, that's something we can, you know, try to work with them. Because we want to make sure that as a community, we engage our youth and we provide them with healthy activities to do here in our community.
I've been a proponent of having joint council meetings from time to time, so that everybody can hear what everybody else is doing. Is that something you see a benefit in?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, it definitely helps. It, it would help us to know what they're doing and what they're working on. Because, you know, there's always opportunities to leverage funds. And not just funds, but resources, resources, right? But, you know, other types of resources too. You know, they're, I'm sure they're very interested in what we're doing, because a lot of the people from Monmouth come over here and spend their money and do some of our activities, the same as, you know, some people from Independence will go over to Monmouth and enjoy some of their establishments too. So I think it, you know, it just makes sense for us to be partnering, working together.
You want to take a couple of minutes, two or three minutes, and close however you'd like to do that?
Yes, I would just like to say just thank you for this opportunity, you know, because, you know, as I spoke a little bit, you know, I come from a background of poverty, you know. It's, it's really difficult for families and, and people like myself to really step out of our comfort zone and try to be, you know, in, in these kinds of positions. You know, I have to be honest with you, I have no idea about running and, you know, campaigning and all that. So the only way that I would be able to do something like that is, you know, with opportunities like this. And, and I appreciate that, because I, I'm hope, I'm hoping, and one of my goals is that if I am the successful candidate, that I will commit to ensuring that we begin to build our leadership. And so I'm hoping to be one of those pathways for other people to join the city council and other parts of our committees and part of our planning commissions, you know. Because it's not necessarily the, I guess, the regular typical way to get into the city council, but I'm hoping that once I'm there, that I can provide an opportunity and I can, you know, really motivate others to be engaged and to run and to campaign and to, to do all that. Because, you know, part of what my work at OCDC and, you know, what I've done before too is to build leadership. You know, as a leader, I think our responsibility is to build other leaders. And this is a great opportunity for me to do that. This is a really great opportunity for you all to do that. And then for me, I, I will commit to making sure that we build other leaders here in our community.
Great. Thank you for taking the time to come in.
No problem.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, council. We have a decision to make. What would you like to do?
Pizza. Can't make an instant.
Of what kind? Anyone want to make a motion?
I will make a statement.
Okay.
Again, I'm, I'm very pleased with both of our candidates. And I think either one would be a very good fit for our city council. I'm just, for me, I'm, I'm leaning, leaning towards Odi, because I believe he might give us a, a greater pathway to one of our major goals that we've been working towards, is to, to get more citizens involved in our city. And maybe able to help some of those positions that we have trouble filling and kind of cast a broader net of volunteers that we could capitalize on. And I, I wanted to make a statement, because I want, I'd like to hear other people's opinions.
And I would like to make a statement also, that when I joined council, and I believe many of us who are on council are in this position, because we filled an empty seat at the time. So we didn't have to go through an election to start with. It's almost an Independence tradition to do it this way. But when I came on council, two of the goals that I had were better relationship with the Hispanic community and more inclusiveness, and to have a hotel. And I'm glad to see that having a hotel is coming to fruition. And because I'm leaning towards Odi doesn't mean that I love Gary any less, but I think, I think that Odi would bring an aspect and a dimension to this council that it has needed for a long time. And I think the comment that sold me, as much as anything else, it is our obligation to create new leaders. And I firmly believe that.
Anybody else have any other comments or thoughts they want to share?
I was just like, like Marilyn, I had to fill in the position. And so I had no idea. And I, I, I like Gary too, and I voted for him. And like I, I was thinking, I, I'm getting old.
You're getting more experienced, not getting older.
I, I feel that, that, that Odi would be a, a good candidate, because he's really enthused and he's really willing to reach out to, to the, the Hispanic community, which I didn't do too much about it. But I think he would be great to, to help the, the, the council of Independence. And I'm really happy that the hotel is coming through too.
Good. Kathy or Michael, did either one of you men, one of them say anything?
I heard very much.
Oh, okay. Kathy, do you have any?
Yeah, I'll jump-
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll jump in real quick. I, I just want to say that I absolutely appreciate all of our applicants. We had these really amazing folks that stepped up. I, I do have to say that I think that Independence is at a pivotal point vision-wise. And I, I really appreciate Odi's vision. Yeah, Independence moving forward, not just being inclusive, but moving forward as, as a unit. And he kind of had to be a certain leader.
I would certainly make a motion at this point.
I think that, I think that'd be appropriate.
I move to appoint Odi Campos to fill the vacant position on the city council.
I second that.
I have a motion and a second.
Second?
Tom got there first, Kathy, but-
Okay, that's, that's fine.
There you go. There you go. Is there any further conversation? Anybody else have anything else? I think this will be good for our community. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Kathy, was that a-
Aye.
That was, okay. Are there any opposed?
Yeah.
There's no, no opposition. The motion carries. So Campos, would you step up? I think Karen has a job to do.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Odi Long Campos Santos-
Aye, Odi Long Campos Santos.
Señor.
Señor.
Then I will support the constitution and the laws-
Then I will support the constitution and the laws.
Of the United States-
Of the United States.
The state of Oregon-
State of Oregon.
And the charter and ordinances-
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Independence, Oregon.
Of the city of Independence, Oregon.
And that I will perform the duties-
And that I will perform the duties.
Of the office of city councillor-
Of the office of city councillor.
To the best of my abilities-
To the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome. Kathy, you tripped over the cord, which is kind of an electronic way of shaking.
Shake your hand.
So- So, would, there's a meeting tomorrow night, and Karen, I'll get you to pack it. Is there any of you- Oh, yes. You can now move to ma-, would you like to adjourn us?
I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Does I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
First motion to the unanimous.
There we go. We're going out to dinner.